Counsel, it is six o'clock. I will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for March tenth. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel, next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Would look for a motion?
Would move adoption?
I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Approval of city minutes, council minutes from February twenty-fourth regular meeting and February twenty-fourth special meeting. I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Um, had one minor correction. It's semantics largely, but I think it matters. Under community comment from the regular meeting, it says Peter Wilson spoke on behalf of the planning commission. Um, maybe should say spoke regarding the planning commission.
Very good. Um.
With that change of.
Make a motion to approve this amendment? We have a motion to approve with the amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second with that amendment.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Think we're good with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, community comment, we have one person sign up for open forum. First up is, uh, Luis, Mayor. Please step to the podium. If you want mine, state your name, uh, address and affiliation for the record and three minutes will be yours.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. I know everybody's really busy, so I'll make this quick. Um, what I've passed out is the brochure with my name, handy little pen magnet, so you can keep your pizza coupons on. And this is a property I'm really passionate about. It's fourteen point seven-two acres on the Mississippi River. It's a, and it started out at one point six, but it is now one point one. And so it's really a competitive price as at this point. What's great about this property, it's one, it's one of a kind. You're never gonna probably see this again. It's got twelve-hundred-and-ninety-seventh lineage feet on the Mississippi River. It's wooded, it's got, it's gorgeous land, it's got beautiful trails. It's got, um, a nice shed on there. It'd be perfect for a brewery. I'm talking to the shed from, um, Ben Franklin that has their shed there and just got closed down. It'd be perfect for them. If anybody knows him and can push it for him. Or it'd be perfect for the city council to buy and then sell half of it to them and use the other half for a park. But the biggest thing is that it's a great property that's in Sartell, which is the most sought-after area in the central Minnesota. It's a face ferret, very safe area. Everybody wants to be in Sartell and live there. So, um, if you don't, if you know someone that'd be interested in investing in this, um, from Anna Gruber, it could be split off, could be split in two pieces or three. So, there's a lot of possibilities. So if you know anyone, pass the word. And if not, city council, please reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to note, it is a one-of-a-kind properties you spoke to. It's beautiful. Um, city's not in a position at this point to acquire additional parkland unfortunately. Uh, but we would absolutely work with and support anyone looking to purchase that for development. Thank you. Uh, coun- uh, counsel, next is community linkage. We have the preliminary and final plat for Coney Park.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the audience that I assume is not here for this, but you get to hear all about it. Um, before you, counsel, is the approval for the preliminary and final plat for Cane Park. You can see on that depiction, City Hall, I pointed out. So it's just across Pine Cone from where we are right now. It's a large property. I'll get into some of those details in a bit here. But Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the preliminary and final plat on March third. And all comments have since been addressed by city staff and engineering. Robbie, can you go to the next slide, please? So the details of the preliminary and final plat, um, it's a total of six point seven acres, creating one platted lot, just under one acre at point nine-two acres. And a large outlot at five point seven-eight acres. How this came about, um, is the current property owner and family reached out to city staff asking what they can do with the property. And from some family discussions, they discussed that they'll plat one lot that you can see there, that lot, one block one. And build a residential home on that property and leave the outlot for marketing and future development. So another side note is that this parcel, the entire parcel was part of the orderly annexation that we approved back in January. So this is now within the city limits and would follow our city ordinances for the subdivision and zoning, which this does meet. But I wanted to point that out, that even if it still remained in the township per orderly annexation agreement, they would have to annex anyway. Some other details is that when that outlot, A, there is, um, further developed or redeveloped, meaning the house has building permits required for major renovations, things like that. And/or the land is further subdivided, we would then need to go into further discussions of requiring right-of-way easements, things like that at that time. Right now, the access for that created lot is off of Terry Lane, so there's no changes to that. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary and final plat for Cane Park as presented, since all comments have been addressed. And the motion for counsel this evening is approval of the preliminary, preliminary and final plat for Cane Park. I would ask that you open the public hearing and then address any questions that you would have.
Thank you. Uh, council, are there any initial questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the preliminary and final plat of Coney Park, please step forward. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Yeah. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address just for the record?
Uh, I'm Bob Barrett. I live at one nineteen Chevelle Drive. And used to live on Terry Lane for about thirty-five years before I moved to where I presently live. Um, I have some more, some concern about some of this and there, I'm not sure what's happening. I have no, cause I, I, I don't quite clearly get the picture. Are we building one house? And then the rest of it is gonna be set aside? Or is there more involved?
Can you able to take that?
Yeah, I can take that, sorry. It would just be the construction of one house on that. If you look at this, far away, I know, um, the upper right hand is just where that lot is, and that would be for one single-family home. And the existing home would remain, um, there. And any newly created lots would have to follow this process again for approval. So just one home.
And so that house wouldn't be on Ninth Avenue?
The, the newly created lot with the future home would be access off Terry Lane.
Where, about where that loop is?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where the new lot would be, right above there?
Yep, that block one, lot one, is the newly created one.
And so that, none of the rest of that's been decided. It's just gonna be, uh.
Just this lot. The rest is an outlot, which essentially is preserved for future, um, development, whatever, whatever those plans may be. Um, but it would have to come back to us for approval and counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record?
Audrey Twitt. It's a, um, four seventy-two Terry Lane, the lot. Um, my intent was to build after the road construction, and then I got this notice about park and a concern because I don't wanna build and it turns into a park that have a basketball court or splash pad or something without knowing. So I guess that's my concern. What is Coney Park all about? Is it like the city is buying it and it's going to be a park added on to the other park or?
Good question. Um, when you're plating property, it's the property's owner, the property owner's decision to name it.
Okay.
And they're just naming it Cane Park.
Okay, so it's not necessarily going to be a municipal park connected to Lyons Park?
Correct. It has no correlation and we don't, as stated, um, earlier, we're not really in the business right now to buy additional parklands, so.
Okay.
It's just what they named it.
Okay, that was my concern. Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else wishing to testify? All right, third and final call. Anyone wishing to testify? See?
My name is Celine Imbult. I live at one zero zero five First Street North. So I'm, my neighbor is the park that's supposedly. So what is the process if they decide or someone decides to build up, um, more homes on that property, other than the one that's already existing? What does that process look like and is there any timeline that we're looking at? And would there be another entrance off of First Avenue, First Street, this street right here, to get onto that property?
Good question. As of right now, there's no, um, we're not aware of any future plans for additional homes or accesses. They would have to follow this process again, um, if they would want to further plat out more, more homes, essentially. And then at that time, we would discuss right-of-way and access, if it would be off of First Street or Terry Lane and what that would look like then. But right now, we don't have anything. It's just a future development outlot.
And with that, location is multi-family homes? A part of that or single-family homes?
It is own, single-family residential, surrounded by a single-family residential homes.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question for, as Carrie mentioned, for that to change, it would have to come back to a public hearing. If it were to change from single-family to any other designation, would have to follow the same process. So you'd be notified. All right, any, uh, anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, would look for a motion?
A motion?
Have a motion, uh, to approve the plats. Is there a second?
Not saying it.
Motion and a second to approve the preliminary and final plat of Cane Park. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. On to consent agenda, we have items five A through five D. I would take a motion on that. Or any questions on, on them?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
We have a motion to approve the consent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. On to item six, monitoring reports. Uh, counsel, in Anna's absence, I'll, uh, motion to table that for now. And, uh, we can come back to that. Is there a second?
I'd second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. On to, uh, Grizzly Lane Final Design Guidance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, tonight, we'll be looking for some guidance, uh, before moving into the final design on the Grizzly Lane Improvements Project. Some recent, recent council action, um, on January twenty-seventh, the council did approve the feasibility report for the Grizzly Lane improvements. Um, that feasibility report included the recommendation to, um, narrow the roadway and install a sidewalk. And then at the February, February twenty-fourth meeting, we held the preliminary assessment hearing to meet the four-twenty-nine assessment process. Um, that assessment process was approved, um, but at that time, council did receive some feedback from residents. Um, and staff was directed to take a look at some different options that wouldn't necessarily include a, um, sidewalk for the project. Couple of points of clarification in getting feedback over the last two weeks. Um, wanna clarify that the proposed sidewalk that was in the feasibility report is along Grizzly Lane. Um, the project does include some pavement improvements along Eighth Street North, but there is no sidewalk or pedestrian improvement, um, proposed along Eighth Street North. The improvement would be along Grizzly Lane. Uh, the goals of the project were to address poor road surface conditions, um, provide pedestrian safety, and then provide some traffic calming measures. Um, the top image on your screen is what was proposed in the feasibility report, which included narrowing the road from a, the existing thirty-six-foot wide roadway to a thirty-two-foot ride roadway. And then adding a six-foot sidewalk, um, along the curb. The impacts would be shared between residents on either side of the roadway, essentially, um, impacting each side by one foot. Um, after discussion and direction at the last council meeting, um, on the bottom image is a on-road bike lane option, which would include retaining the existing thirty-six-foot wide roadway. Um, removing parking from one side and instead, um, delineating a seven-foot wide bike lane. Uh, that bike lane would be clearly delineated as a, a bike lane and then have a two-foot reaction distance between the pedestrian bikes and then also the, the road and the cars. Um, that two-foot reaction distance and the bike lane would meet the state aid standards for the roadway. It is part of the city's state aid, uh, system. Both options have a number of, of pros and cons. Um, the thirty-two-foot ride roadway with the six-foot sidewalk is the safest option for pedestrians on foot, um, simply because you do have the six-inch vertical separation between the cars and the pedestrians. Um, the narrower roadway does provide traffic calming, um, according to a national database, uh, for crashes. Going from your standard twelve-foot wide drive lane down to an eleven-foot drive lane reduces crashes by twenty-four percent. If you go from a twelve-foot wide drive lane to a ten-foot drive lane is what we would be proposing to do in this case, um, you see a crash reduction of forty-two percent. Some cons, um, that we heard from residents or concerns that they had were snow removal, um, with the sidewalk. Um, and then also, um, some mailbox placement. And so that is what kinda prompted looking at the, um, on-road bike option. Uh, some pros to that approach would be, snow removal would be done with the plows. Um, residents would not have to, to do the snow removal on the sidewalk. Um, and there is a slight reduction in overall project cost, but it is a slight reduction. Um, some cons is it doesn't provide the safest option for those pedestrians on foot. Um, but your parking is now limited to one side of the roadway, um, and it doesn't provide as significant of a traffic calming because you're staying at that wider, uh, thirty-six-foot wide road. I had some other slides that are on anyone. I did, um, wanna mention, there are other options that we could have considered and we didn't because our goal, when we were looking at the feasibility report and we'd reached out to residents, was to minimize impacts to the residents. And so we were trying to keep that road, um, typical section as narrow as we could. However, if snow removal, mailbox, some of those other concerns, um, are more important, you could add a boulevard between the roadway and a sidewalk. Um, minimum four-foot boulevard is what's recommended, so you would increase the impact from each resident from one foot, uh, on each side to three feet on each side. That does allow some snow storage between the roadway and the sidewalk, which is one, one concern we heard from residents. Um, the other option is, the bottom picture here shows what Grizzly Lane looks like on the west side of Nineteenth Avenue North. Um, and that is currently a boulevard with a, a ten-foot wide trail. Um, that could be extended to the east side of Grizzly Lane. Um, and we could narrow the, the trails have to be a, a minimum of eight feet wide. So you could go down to eight feet wide. Um, keep the boulevard, eliminate the boulevard. Again, it just adds the amount of impact to the, the property owners. And so there's a lot of different options out there for providing pedestrian, um, ways and safety. Um, the two that we have illustrated here are the two that minimize impacts to the residence yards as much as possible.
April, really quick on that last slide, um, are all the different options that you talked about within the right-of-way?
Uh, correct. So when I say impact residence yards, it's still city right-of-way and it's technically city-owned property, but it's their yards that they mow, that they water. Um, so it's just kinda the width of that roadway corridor that we're talking about, but all options do stay within the city right-of-way. Um, the two pictures up on top are examples of what that bike lane, um, could look like or would look like. Um, on the left side, you can see that two-foot reaction distance and how that's delineated. Um, and then we would recommend also clearly identifying that bike lane, um, with typically its green pavement or green striping, green paint for the bikeway.
April, quick question?
Yeah.
Um, on that two-foot reaction strip, could you do a change of texture in some sort of, if it's concrete slab or rumble bumps, strip, some sort of, and maybe even a removable plastic cones periodically or whatever they are. I've seen them down in, they do it down in Minneapolis a lot, unlike the busier streets on Portland or whatever, though. They put up every periodically, there's a reflective plastic.
Like a four-foot high. We've got them over on Fifth Street North here in, in the median. Um, all those are viable options you can look at. Um, but you run, read, anything you add, add, adds costs. Um, you have to take into account snow plowing, um, so it can become a, a, a snow plow issue. Um, you know with those four-foot delineators, if you think about trying to plow snow?
Yeah, I wouldn't say plow. I think those would be removable in the summer, or in the winter, I'm sorry, allow it to be plowed properly, but I just looking for some sort of, and we put up those temporary crosswalk signs and it could be something simple as that.
It, it, it could be, as soon as you're putting up and installing anything like that and having to take it down, it is, it's additional staff time, it's additional cost, and so it's trying to balance and weigh the different options and, and what's out there. But they, they are all options that are available.
I'm more worried about pedestrian and biker than I am a public works guy, having to pick up that in the fall. Um, so if, if need be, there's solutions there that we could delineate that lane clearly that if it were at grade, it would be somewhat, you're adding safety measures to that.
I think you have to, yes, it's something that could be done. I think you have to weigh the pros and cons and the differences between the options. Um, the safest options for foot traffic pedestrians is that vertical separation, that six-inch curb for a number of different reasons. Um, and so if you're doing an on-road, uh, bike lane option, what's the ultimate goal there? You can put delineators, um, down. Is it to, um, eliminate the need for s- snow plowing for residents? Like, what's the goal of moving it from a, that vertical separation, which is the preferred option from a safety standpoint, to an on-road option? And are there other ways to accommodate that? For instance, if you went with what's on the, um, west side of Nineteenth Avenue North, a trail, you, it's a regional type of road. It could be a regional trail. And so trails are typically plowed by city. Um, so if you did the trail option, right, that removes the plow or the snow removal from residents, um, to, onto the city, which eliminates that. So I guess it, the question I would have is, what is the goal in moving it from a off-road option to an on-road option?
Well, least imp, it looks like there's least amount of impact to the neighborhood in regards to you're not going into their yards or their grass at this point, or just defining our pedestrian bikeway clear, cleaner, I guess.
Do we know if, uh, we would do rumble strips if plows would tear those up?
I, I mean, you're talking like rumble strips from on the side of a highway?
Two-foot section in between there?
If it's a, if it's a depression, it wouldn't impact the plows. Um, if it's something that's raised up, that would cause a plow issues. You know, I, I think I'd mentioned, um, at the last meeting that we'd received a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, um, on both sides, right, voicing very strong opinions. And I think you can, council can appreciate that over the last two weeks, you've received similar feedback, um, on, on both sides. And unfortunately, there isn't a decision here that you can make that. There isn't a decision here that you can make that is going to make everybody happy. You're gonna have some people um that like one option and not another and vice versa.
Welcome to city government.
Yeah. Um so it 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 is a difficult decision, um when we're looking at it and. Safeties are number one and we're looking at then also the reason why we recommended the sidewalk option. Um is because it's in line with the city code, it's in line with all the city policies, it's in line with city standards, it's in line with state aid design requirements. That's why we recommended the sidewalk option. Um but there are other factors you have to take into consideration and there are pros and cons for for each option.
Anything else?
One more clarif- I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One more clarification, on on the uh pathway versus the bottom picture here where the other part of Grizzly is kind of regional trail. That's covered, the maintenance of that's covered by the city. Um how much impact would that have technically on? Whatever side you decide to put that on Grizzly into that yard, is it still just a foot impact or is it?
We would, with that option, we'd still recommend narrowing the road to thirty-two feet. You could do it um with a boulevard and an eight-foot wide trail. Um so you would go from a one-foot impact on either side to um a five-foot impact on either side, on both sides. You could eliminate the boulevard um and just do an eight-foot wide trail, so you'd go from a one foot impact on each side. Um then to a uh three-foot impact on each side.
Uh just curiosity question, you said half of, or one side would be the bike lane, the other side would be parking. Um do we know which is which right now?
We.
The north is the bike or the south?
Yeah, the recommendation is to keep any pedestrian, whether that's a bike lane or a sidewalk, on the north side to maintain that connectivity between um all the different parks and amenities and schools, so. Um we would not change our recommendation um for which side that would be located on, we would want that on the north side.
Okay, so then if we did that and uh a car came and parked there, they're eligible to be ticketed because that's a bike lane?
Council, as we get into discussion on this, uh first want to kind of level set for us, so last council meeting, we had the public hearing, uh open forum. At that point, we decided on the um assessments already, right? So assessments are set, preliminary assessments are set, uh final assessments will be once a project's complete. Uh so really what's in front of us tonight is what we had requested is two options, one is to maintain uh the thirty-six foot roadway. And then uh that was our second option. Uh the first option, which is the top of the screen, is what staff had presented last council meeting. But it really comes down to what is that, what is the impact, um which of the two options do we want to go with uh moving forward? Absolutely appreciate, we appreciate all of the engagement, we received a ton of emails, like a lot of us had texts and phone calls as well. And it, for me, it it boils down to. The sidewalk, which uh narrows the roadway. Or as council member Lynch just um asked and and validated is, if we don't go with a sidewalk, there is a parking restriction, which. I don't know was clear at our last meeting. And I wish, hindsight's twenty-twenty, I wish we would have been able to bring that up um as we deliberated between a sidewalk or a no parking on one side. And so again, ramifications on both sides, but I just wanted a level set for us. What decision is actually? Uh in front of us tonight, uh so that we can get into design work and uh and move the project forward? Are there any other thoughts or feedback on this?
Yeah, I think, just thanks for all the feedback from, we got a lot of feedback, I would say it's fifty-fifty. A a lot of people had very strong opinions on both sides, I think as I weighed a lot of the feedback and looked at this. Um I I our ordinance is a sidewalk and I think we need a sidewalk of some sort uh for pedestrian to be safer than it is today with the parks, the the travel to Pinecone Central Park. Especially with the level of traffic there. That said, having moved to a place where we're hoping to get to a place where we can relieve that traffic over time with Fifteenth Street North. Um and also although a lot of the other properties along this route have already been impacted in the backside of the yard. Uh for me, I I'm leaning more towards the bike path, I think that's an improvement, it adds more safety than we've had there for the last twenty years. Um and and that's where I'm leaning.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Can you go over the snow removal again, what you were discussing? The city would be doing the snow removal with the sidewalk? With a bike path?
For the for the bike lane, so between these two options, if the sidewalk option, residents are responsible for snow removal on the sidewalk. Um because the bike lane would be on-road, the plows would naturally do the snow removal for that bike lane.
And council member Deers, I'll just add to that, um April, can you flip to the screen of the images? This one, uh so if you did do a bike path off-road, the city would plow that too. So just to clarify, any form of bike path, we would cover.
And let me just make sure, my feedback was on on-road bike path, just so I know, I I don't want to eat up more of their yards, just so, um that's what I was looking at.
Uh I I would agree with Judd, I mean, this this is a tough one, we've heard from a lot of people and like you said, they're they're very passionate and. Everybody's perception of of safety is is a little bit different and and nobody's necessarily wrong, that's a matter of individual perspective, but. I, you know, I think this, everybody moved into this neighborhood with without the sidewalks and they they knew what they were getting, it's a great neighborhood, I used to live there. I I just think that the sidewalk is probably unnecessary at this point, it probably does place too much of a burden on the homeowners who. Bought a property without a sidewalk and now are going to be tasked with um cleaning it all summer long, or all winter long. Excuse me, and uh so no, I would favor the bike lane as well, I think it's the least disruptive approach. It's more cost-effective to the homeowners on the assessment, on the ongoing maintenance, on the sprinklers, on the mailbox access remains the same. Um I think there's a number of factors. Um I guess I respect the opinion of the people who feel that we need a sidewalk there, but I I think this um gets us a lot closer to safety and like you said. Hopefully in a few years, uh we'll have that uh alternative access through Fifteenth and this becomes a residential road again and not a thruway.
I don't know that we can go um wrong with either, uh would be my take on it, I think it's either one's an improvement from what we have and I do believe we need to do something. Where I'm struggling with it is um our our policies, our guidance for residential. Uh is to have one, if not two sidewalks. And so what I've really been leaning into is, hey, what? What unique characteristics about this project, specifically Grizzly Lane? Overcomes why we shouldn't do it uh versus the more typical or standard of of doing it. I understand the impact, uh previously lived in this area, had sidewalk, I was on corner lot, so I had sidewalk on both sides, or on two sides. Um it's it is a a challenge, um if not a pain during a typical winter. But I also have young children and uh I'm frequently telling them, go bike, but stay on the sidewalk and so I can also. Understand the impacts there uh for families in the neighborhood. I continue to lean towards having a uh the sidewalk as presented. And and again, simply uh based on, I don't see any extenuating circumstances as to as to why we wouldn't. Um but I do think if if we landed at the other, um it's also an improvement from where we're at today. Council member Ellis?
Um I'm I'm leaning towards the bike path option uh due to the impact to the the residents. The extenuating circumstances are, the north side of Grizzly from Thirteenth to Fifteenth, we took half their backyard. And as 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 nice as I hope it turns out to be. Um we still already really impacted their yard. Um and I I just feel like that having that pushed on to them from both sides is is pretty unfair. I think that if we make a, you know, concerted effort to make this bike path and. My other thing is, I obviously live in the wild, so I drive this multiple times a day. And uh I see every single day, you know, kids, some little kids walk on the grass, some kids walk on the bike path or the the shoulder. Um I don't see a lot of adult bikers going to ride on the sidewalk, they're gonna be on that street regardless. Um most of them will be riding on the street. The runners don't run on sidewalks, I don't I don't get it, I watch them and there's a sidewalk and they'll run in the street, I I maybe it's just a consistency thing that. Is easy to not go up and down curbs, but um. I would encourage people to wear reflective clothing on that road, because nobody seems to do that either, they're always in dark clothes walking at night. So if we can get a a distinguished bike path with this separation two-foot reaction strip that has some sort of reflective. Nature or vibration nature that really defines that as a, I mean, it it's working in Minneapolis, um they they've done it on multiple streets. Um where they've taken busy roads like Portland, I mean, that's that road is a lot busier than Grizzly is and uh it's pretty safe, so. Um I think I I think we can define that roadway and like I said, in the future, when Fifteenth goes through and Nineteenth goes through, I I I hope, you know, ten years down the road, we're. This is a non-factor and we just have a nice bike path there, so. I I think that least amount of impact there, but the most amount of safety is defining that as a as a bike path and a colored pavement and. Whatever we do on that two-foot separation, I think that'll slow enough traffic. Yes, it's gonna be a little pain in the butt to park across the street when you have guests. Um or rather, you know, uh visitors, but I I also think that that's calming as well. You get some parking on that street, you're gonna start to slow traffic down and um. And right now, we get two people on either side and it's a little bit of a challenge, but. So that's where I'm at, I think that's, you know, let's make that a safest bike path and start as we can.
Yeah, it's a tough one for me and thanks for all the feedback that I've gotten over the last three to four days with the two. Either one's gonna be better than what we have, uh I look at everyone's yard and not chewing up more uh grass than what they already have. I have a sidewalk in front of mine, so I know the pain of taking care of that. Eh I'm leaning a little bit, uh you know, with some of the comments Tim made on this too. If we can define a safe uh safety rumble strip, something like that with that bike path, that'd be my biggest concern on the the safety piece of it. From runners to bikers, yeah, they're gonna be on the road, so I see that point as well.
Just want to reiterate, no parking would be on that north north side. And so as we appear, it's it's a for leaning that direction, my comment would be, let's not litter the front yards with no parking signs on either. Let's figure out a tactful way to market that it's no parking. Keep cars out of there, maybe the the design of that two-foot um buffer can also help encourage no parking.
Absolutely.
Council, any other questions?
This would be the first road in sort of have anything like this crap.
This would be our first road like this, yeah?
Thank you, council.
Uh council, um let's get an actual motion. Um someone want to make a motion for the Grizzly Lane final design guidance?
Like I make a motion for option two, thirty-six foot road width, um and a seven-foot bike lane on road.
There's a motion to approve uh option number two as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. That carries four-one. Uh on to city administrator and departmental incident reports, we have admin.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my uh Friday update incidental reports from the twenty-eighth and then March seventh, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city administrator? Seeing none, thank you. Public safety?
Mayor, members of the council, this is my uh first public safety report, including both police and fire, but let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for public safety? Thank you. Engineering, public works?
Yeah, mayor and members of the council, you have a report, um just want to say thanks again for providing clarity on the the design for Grizzly Lane. Um I know it's not an easy decision and um I agree, any improvement from what we have today is a huge improvement, so thank you for that. And I'd be happy to take any um questions you might have on our department report.
Any questions for engineering or public works? Thank you. And engagement and experiences?
Mayor, members of council, you have my monthly report in front of you, it's gonna be much more interesting and fun than the other ones you have in front of you, so. Um it is my first one and I will be doing these uh monthly moving forward.
Any questions for engagement and experiences? Thank you. Uh council updates, Tim?
Uh just thanks again uh to uh residents along Grizzly that. The feedback that we asked for, they they came to the table. I mean, I've never seen so many emails, Anna, uh you answering every one of them is commendable in itself, so I appreciate the information and the delineation of. All the information, what you guys did as far as engineering and coming up with solutions for us, appreciate it, so, thanks.
Uh?
Nothing.
Rusty?
None.
Judd?
Uh same thing, just thanks for all the feedback, thanks for giving me extra options, uh it sounds like I think there's a retirement uh at the community center, I just wanted to announce congratulations to that uh individual as well.
Uh yes, Judd, uh just insert Brad Border, he retired, he was the previous public works director and then came on as um our nighttime primary uh part-time staff and now he is officially retired.
Well, I'd like to say happy retirement and thanks for all the years of service, so with that, I don't have anything else.
I don't have anything further, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.